Hello, everyone. It is six thirty February twenty fifth. I'm going to read a our statement and then I'll call the meeting to order. The Citrus Select Board is committed to riding environment with respect to our meetings. We ask all members to interact with polite and in our even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our meeting and everyone, including marginalized and marginalized communities. If you feel as welcome or respected, we ask our community members, everyone who participates, commit to be standards that support them, respect, or welcome the community. Okay, with that, I have a motion to public board accept the agenda.
So move.
The advisor's calmly seconded by Ms. Harrison and I ask P D A roll call though because we have a member joining us via.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Thank you unanimous on favor.
Excellent. All right. First on the agenda, do we have any walk-ins or zoom-ins? Which is always fun. No zoom-ins, no walk-ins. That's stuff that's not on the agenda. So we'll go through the report of the town administrator.
Good evening. We'll start as ours with water treatment plant updates. We're still doing work in the foundations and sub-surface utilities. We are expecting the end of this week, beginning next week, to do a very large port on the floor. We're also bringing in a lot of fill to bring out the south end of the site so people will see more trucks coming out of the site over the next couple of weeks to that when they're going up there. We post those updates every week so people can get some of the pictures. But we are still on schedule and on budget at this point. We're very early in the process. Resident beach and transfer station stickers are on sale. Residents can purchase them online at the counter or mail-in. Resident beach stickers never sell out. Transfer station stickers are also available right now. They expire at the end of March. So you need to have a new sticker by the end of March. They are valid for one year from the day of purchase. If you buy it now, those are valid until the end of March. So you gotta buy it by the end of March, but if you buy it early, you can still get it till the end of March next year. State has announced it was very high influenza level in Thomas Cituit as well as in the state. The Board of Health still has some flu vaccines available for anybody over age eighteen. Call the Board of Health to schedule that, seven one five four five eight seven five. They also have a flu advisory that was issued by the state on their website. You can go to the town's website, the Board of Health, and look at that. This could tell you your grandmother was right. You're sick, stay home. You cough, cover your mouth, and wash your hands. But there is more information on the town website that you can look at, how to help with the spread of influenza. If you don't see the point, you'll notice where the contractor, the victim appears on the Seapoint seawall. The intersection between Turner Lighthouse and Jericho Road is mobilizing this week. We expect the start of construction on that work. End of this week, beginning next week, that's a repair project that runs along that whole section of seawall that is in pretty bad shape right now. The Sore Department wants to remind homeowners and realtors that there is a requirement of the situation of soil rules and regulations for properties at the time of sale or transfer to replace their soil service. It is made of clay, espoused concrete, cast iron piping. Reason for this is because the lifespan of these pipes is fifty years old. And these types of pipe were commonly used in construction up until about fifty years ago. So those pipes are all at the end of their useful life. The materials are prone to defects and damage. The cast iron rots out. Clay and concrete is brittle and susceptible to wooden filtration. So you end up with backups. You also have a lot of filtration into the system. The Sore Department keep records of every sewer connection in that situ. There's more than half of the system homeowners and prospective sellers and buyers do it in with a drain later to replace the sewer service at the time of sale or transfer. Want to make sure that all of the code before the transfer item is at, prevent costly destructive blockages and disasters. Any questions, you can call the Sore Department. I'll go online with the rules and regulations. On a good news, while I'm talking about the P P W, I want to congratulate Sean McCarthy and the crew at the transfer station. Receiving an award as quote, "a leader in sustainability" unquote, for twenty twenty-four. Recycling eleven hundred and ninety-nine mattresses. This equates to sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six pounds of recyclable materials repurposed. Forty-seven hundred and ninety-six feet, cubic feet, sorry, material diverted from landfills. Sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six pounds of greenhouse gas reduction by recycling. One hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five kilowatt hours of energy saved by recycling. Congratulations to those guys. Nice job. Anything with recycles obviously kind of throwing in the waste. Thomas Co. has the thing in the situ that partner with researchers at Washington University School of Public Health. Done a set of health needs and issues in the South Shore. Your input is valuable. Water is staying in the community's top priorities. Survey will take about fifteen minutes. Accessible again to the town website. There's a link on there. This is a public health grant that the three towns have worked on together. So if you have a few minutes, please go on and make sure you fill out that survey. It's that time of year. I know the annual data of the chairman time. It's time to once again sign up for your rain barrels. And this year also, for the first time, you can sign up for composting bins. They are available from Earth Machine and Great American Rain Barrel. Rain barrels cost eighty to eighty-nine dollars depending on what color. Compost is eighty dollars. They're on sale in conjunction with Garden and Green Expo. Sales starts now and continues through April thirteenth, and all orders must be in at that time. Emergency room available for pickup starting Saturday, April twenty-sixth at the North South River Watershed Association office. We'll be asking select the pickup date and time for cell serve pickup. The emergency desk will be labeled and available at their office at two fourteen South Street, which is right on the way. In South Shore Y, the back door of the mall. When you go on, you must select state, Massachusetts, and organization of North and South River Watershed. Go to our website and find the link. I'll go to the North South River Watershed and sign up. The annual town election is going to be held on Saturday, May thirty-first. Nomination papers are now available. Anyone who wishes to run and be on the ballot and take our nomination papers, contact the town clerk's office. You need one hundred signatures, certified signatures of registered voters in the town to be on the ballot. Deadline to signature submitted is Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The annual Sister City Film Festival kicks off this week on Thursday, February twenty-seventh. The Souci Unbree Sister City Show of the movie this year. This will be followed by Santa Catalina del Fogo Sister City Offering of Gay Britains, A Legacy of Service on March sixth. Flying the West Cork Sister City will show the Commemorations on April tenth. All movies will show on the scene at seven. It goes over at six. The movie starts at six thirty. Suggest the donations, ten dollars, and will be raffle and snacks available. Planning boards continue public hearing on the town meeting articles, particularly the except for dwelling unit article. It's this Thursday, February twenty-seventh at six thirty in this room. Record comments can be submitted to the planning board. Finally, just as a warning, as the warmer weather gets here, we do see snow melting during the day. The temperatures drop at night. That snow belt of water on the street can't ice up. So if you're out late at night or early in the morning, please have a little extra caution because you may run into icy patches on the road. That could cause you some problems. That's what I have for today. Have me answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll start. Can you fill it up? You're all set?
I'm okay.
I'm good.
Just a couple, couple of small things. One, do you want residents, because of the warmer weather, people send a lot of coyotes out there. Do we want them contacting the animal control? Don't have them contact. Don't do anything besides just staying away.
Yes, like we stay away, there's really not a lot, you know, control to do. Make sure you keep an eye on your pets. Don't put pet food outside your house if you ever have a habit of leaving pet food out for your pets. Coyotes don't eat it. But there's really not a lot of animal control to do just because someone's stuck there.
Okay, just kidding. Just went. Thank you for that. Also, those rain barrels are your great Mother's Day gifts.
Not really.
Or Mother's Day gifts. Gardeners' gifts. I'm trying to sell the rain barrels. They'll be fabulous.
Why don't you add a composting part?
And, and composting is also fabulous as well. So trying to make the sale. Thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to our first.
Get vacuum on your water hat.
I know. My mom would love me to be saving water and being good. We'll start with a two hundred dollar donation. We're all, I'll go chapter six, I'm five. How are you?
Good. How are you? Ed Kelly from the Veterans Advisory Council brought in the two hundred dollar donation. Disabled American Veterans Ralph Calvin, chapter sixty-five, for the gift account for the Veterans Advisory. Just very generous of them. Very appreciative.
So nice. I love being able to do that. Definitely with gratitude. Ms. Campfield, anything you'd like to say or you all set?
No, it's just very nice. And like you said, we appreciate the support and recognizing our vets.
I'll take a motion.
Move to accept a two hundred dollar donation from disabled American veterans Ralph Calvin, chapter sixty-five.
Ms. Harrison, second, and then Ms. Ponley. Roll call though. Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Thank you unanimous, Colin Baker.
Now are. Again, a year after, I love their soul. That's fabulous. It's a legend.
Petra Telly Insurance Adjusters has, again, as you said, they have done this for many years. Donated a thousand dollars to the Cituit Fire Department for their dive team. This comes at a great time as they're outfitting their new dive car. So we're very appreciative of them always thinking of our fire department and the dive team.
And that dive team has been very active, lots of training. Yeah, being able to go out there and go safe, especially with some pretty bad things that happened out there over the last couple of years. So this is definitely needed and better selling insurance adjusters to Virginia. That was very generous. I'll take. Anything else or we'll take a motion?
Move to accept a thousand dollar donation from Petra Telly Insurance Adjusters to be used to purchase dive equipment for the fire department dive team.
Second.
Start saying about Ms. Lee.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Tarleton.
Yes.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
You unanimous on favor. Thank you.
All right. Barker House by Wedgewood weddings. We're going to talk about the change of manager on premise.
We do. Lyric Crocker is going to, you know, zip by P as in. So Lyric, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello. How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
I'm good.
Great. So again, just for the record, just state your name and where you're from. And let's talk about this change of manager and why it's happening and we'll go from there.
Okay. My name is Lyric Crocker. And I'm sorry, can you guys also admit Tyler Hen seller? He's our attorney. Is he able to get in?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Hello. How are you, buddy?
Tyler. No, no worries. Thank you. All right.
Uh, well, yeah, so this is Lyric. And just for the record, we're here for Wedgewood Beverage, Inc. Lyric is the general manager here. She's been the general manager here actually since twenty twenty-two. Though she is just now getting, you know, the official promotion to manager of record on the liquor license. Before that, she was the director of special events at the Crown Plaza in Warwick, my hometown. And she's also a U.S. citizen. And she is familiar with the rules and regulations related to the sale and service of alcohol of this board, the A B C C, and the laws of the Commonwealth. So with that, again, we're happy to take any questions, but I wanted to get all the baseline stuff out of the way.
That's great. Thank you. I will, I'll, I'll start with Ms. Campfield. I mean, just overall, just approach it. Oh, no, we've got all the background information. So folks know that's been submitted to us and your background and insurance and all your certifications. Which is wonderful. Ms. Campfield, questions?
Yes, as you said, we have, the backup is in order and is appropriate. And so did I hear you right, counselor, that Lyric, you've been there, you've been on site at the Barker for, since twenty-two?
So I've actually been on site since very beginning of twenty-three, so January of twenty-three. Or no, sorry, January of twenty-four. Because it's twenty twenty-five now.
So you've been on site a year and you're familiar with your operations there?
Yes, very.
And you're strictly private events at this point, right?
Yes, we are private events only.
Okay, so how do you guys, this is, I've had this question for other caterer or for other event venues. How do you, you've got a wedding and there's a zillion people running around and it's all family. How do you, how do you approach carding for underage? Because it's kind of hard to tell at a wedding.
Yep. So actually, at our ten-day meeting out when we're taking all the final details, we actually have them give us all the under twenty-one, how many they're going to have at the wedding. And then we also take their names and what seats they're going to be sitting at. And then typically at the bars, the bars, everyone is tip certified. So typically they will card everyone. And then once they've carded for the first time, or if anyone looks under twenty-one, then they'll go ahead and keep carding. But generally, we try to keep a good hold on it and have eyes on whoever is under twenty-one during the event.
Okay. And I don't, since it's gone to, to the Wedgewood, I don't believe there's been any infraction.
Yeah, no, we try to stay. I actually came up from the sales office. So even from coordinating events myself, we try to stay very, very on top of that one. We don't want anyone getting in trouble or any underage drinking.
We don't want you to get in trouble, and you will if you serve the minors. So we take it very seriously, obviously. So, no, congratulations on your promotion. And, you know, we're really excited that the venue is doing well.
Thank you. We're excited to be here.
You're set?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. But again, thank you for saving that historic building for us.
Oh, yeah, of course. I know. We couldn't let it go down. I was like, oh, my goodness, the second week coming in, I can't let it happen.
I know. I know. It's like, yeah. Well, yeah, we would have mentioned that. But it's beautiful, right? It's such a beautiful spot. It's fabulous. It's going well.
Yeah.
You're going to knock it out of the park. So that's great.
Thank you.
We'll take a motion.
Move the Select Board to approve the application for change of manager to Lyric Crocker on behalf of Wedgewood Beverages Dean doing business as the Barker House by Wedgewood weddings located twenty-one Barker Road for the Section Twelve General on-premise slash all alcohol beverages license.
Ms. Ponley, second, and then Ms. Harrison. Roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Thank you unanimous on favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.
You too.
And just for fun, I mean, sometimes these are very quick, but the background, you know, we've seen a lot of these. Very well qualified, which is great. All right. Do we have Anne Marie Winchester? Oh, or, yeah, anyone else for the, yeah, Greg, Greg Shea Memorial? Sorry.
Yes, I'm Greg Shea. Yeah, right. I'm here to represent the Gregory Black Shea Foundation. Anne Marie Winchester is actually a Hong Kong. She, she manages the South Shore Road Race Management Company. So she filed the application for our attorney. It's on behalf of us. So, and then my wife Allison, who was the new president and founder of our foundation is on.
All right. So tell us, oh, hi. Who are you? Yeah, tell us about your organization. Tell us about the yeah, the race, how often you've done it, and things like that.
Like I said, my name is Greg Shea. We founded this foundation in twenty twenty-three. We lost our twenty-one-year-old son Gregory to accidental poison four years ago. Shortly after coming through the haze and the fog of the morning and grief of that tragic loss, we put our heads together at the kitchen table with our family members. And my wife was the driver of the force behind it, but we were determined to have something good come out of this loss. So we put together the foundation, took some time. We got our five oh one C three certification from the federal government. And the mission of the foundation is to reach out, support, and educate people around the abuse and the dangers of fentanyl and opioid use. We've been able to get involved with the Cituit High School. We're based in Cituit. I grew up here, went to split our area of Cituit. We are currently working with a couple of teachers from Cituit High School. Put together a program to share Gregory's story, Gregory was driving Cituit High School. And share the, it's going to be like a roundtable discussion with guidance counselors, peer support, my wife, and the teachers. And it's going to be presented in a podcast format reported. And it's kind of trying to get Gregory's story across. Share the message that he's a kid just like that. He was a kid just like that. Played sports, grew up in Cituit, you know, did all the same things they're doing now. And, you know, obviously, we don't want anyone else to wear the way he did. So that's going to be the thrust of it. And then, of course, resources that are available now for the kids to reach out. And not only just surrounding substance use, but in mental health because of the stigma that's involved. Gregory suffered from depression, anxiety, and he also had a learning disability, wasn't, which wasn't diagnosed till late in his academic career, which was eventually at the high school. And I can't give enough accolades to the Cituit High Special Ed Department, they have been there for him to get him back on track. Get him squared over his studies, invited to graduate high school. He got himself in a hole, and that just added to his depression and anxiety. But like I said, with the help of the Cituit Special Ed Department, he graduated. We have, like I said, the high school is one of the things we're working on. One of our other main focuses is reaching out to people who have recently lost loved ones to substance use, whether it's fentanyl, opioid, and trying to be, whether it's like the emergency response team, if we will. Something we didn't have when we lost Gregory, we didn't know what to do. We try to be, when we're made aware of this, step in and be on scene and be able to provide them with resources, financial support if necessary, and point them in the right direction to get all the support and services they need to try to get, you know, move forward and make sense of their lives after having such a tragedy. The other thing is, excuse me, last year, we were able to award three Cituit High School students scholarships through our foundation. We named it the Gregory M. Shea, excuse me, two resiliency scholarship because of the struggle that we had in high school. And both of them then was able to graduate. So we geared it towards that. We had over fifty applications. Everyone deserved a, we are only going to, we originally planned to award one scholarship. We want to decide to do two because there were just so many deserving kids. And we hope to make that a annual benefit. So it's a family run from the board, with all family members, a family-run foundation, all volunteer, nobody drawn with salary. And we're totally one hundred percent donation driven. So as a result, and this is actually a question, is our first year to, to, to organize a local road race as a, as a form of fundraiser to support our initiatives and our, our scholarship fund. So we acknowledge that we engage the services of Anne Marie Winchester, who's the owner and operator of South Shore Road Race Management, who's managed hundreds of races. Basically, what she does is she's the, she's got a lot of registrations through her website. She's the onsite person, the day of the race for time management, handing out bibs, awarding, tracking the time, awarding winners, medals, stuff like that. She also provides some other support. She also, her company supplies the insurance that's necessary to run the race. And we originally were going to use Saginaw Hall as the base for the race, but the police department thought that the route we had would have been too traffic intensive. So we were lucky enough to get in touch with the Cituit Beach Association. They agreed to let us use their hall, and that'll be the starting and finishing point of the race. And it'll, I don't know, you guys have the race room?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a great group. It's scenic, you know, we, yeah, we can't beat it, you know, when I lay those point, Long Ocean Side Drive. Flat river, so hopefully we can, yeah. No altitude issues like Colorado.
Not too challenging. So we hope that that makes it more appealing to potential runners. But so that's it in a nutshell from a foundation standpoint. And my wife and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start with this. I think, I think it was August. I know it was the summer, but I was up International Opioid Awareness Day and with all the purple flags and I was talking to the families and some folks that were there. And it is, number one, the community and the support of those families and the folks who've gone through this is unbelievable. As a town, I don't know, doesn't what we can do, but I know we need to do more. I don't know what exactly that is to support families like you, because it is such a scourge and terrible and it's happening that probably years ago, people didn't really want to talk about it more. I think we're getting better about talking about mental health issues and opioid type issues. So thank you for, for stepping forward and having that conversation. That's really what it is. So I'll start with that, and then we can talk more about logistics and other things. Ms. Campfield, questions about the routes or?
I, my question, not about the route, is about, remind me what you, how many people you estimate will be participating?
We're hoping around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five.
That's what I thought. And I'm just a little concerned about the parking at SBA. We've had complaints in the past that people have, you know, sort of bled out over that parking lot and not literally, but, you know, impinged on the wetlands there and the neighboring roads. So have you thought about encouraging folks to carpool or, or reduce the number of cars?
Well, actually, you jogged my memory. What I meant to also mention, and I don't think it was in the application, was we were going to ask permission to use the Cituit Sand Hills Beach parking lot as like a main parking lot and then just use the Cituit Beach Association parking for what it can handle. We know it's pretty limited. That's why we were looking at the Sand Hills parking lot anyway, saying we need to get permission for that.
Great.
That's not in the, that's not in our ticket season yet, right?
No.
Yeah, no.
Open. Well, the boat ramp down there is probably still open.
It's open.
Because I don't think hardly anyone takes their boats in on April twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah, we got the boat, boat ramp. That's on that.
I mean, if you can run, you can walk.
Right. We can walk an extra couple lines.
Where's the Burger, where are the Burger Tavern folks back? Should fall in that.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a minute. We just had the negative, huh?
Well, plus Pier Forty-four parking is open there as well. So there's actually quite a bit of parking that time of year.
Well, I can direct folks there.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, the Sand Hills Beach parking lot is a pretty good side of it, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
And it's, you know, the short line is actually a path that runs behind through the wetlands over to the beach.
But to be sensitive to the neighbors.
Yeah.
That's the other thing, actually.
There have been parking issues, but they're usually in summer and, you know, people's thinking park wherever they want to walk. So if it's at the Beach Association, it would be best, I think, to try to get people to park in other places.
As well, yeah.
Because there's plenty of parking available right at that point.
Do you know that, like, I forgot to mention, I was, I did get a list of the butters from the assessive office, and they've been aware of our intentions and of this meeting.
Yeah, they bought our letters.
Other questions or?
No, but I just want to say thank you for sharing your story. I know it's hard to do. And it's, you know, our hearts go out to anyone who's lost child.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We, we. We, we, people take different tracks when this tragedy strikes their family and decide how much they wanna share. And we thought it was important to share it all, be honest, for awareness and for people to hopefully learn from it, which is what we're trying to do with high school kids, you know, and try to bring it to their level and to see through Gregory's life, what's going on and how he's, he could be, he was just like a young kid, had dreams, you know, future, uh, and struck that. So I, you know, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
You gonna run it?
Maybe, we probably should.
I'm in. Mark, you know that in the back, he's into. You have two, you have two signups right here tonight. Uh, we'll go from there. Oh, let's prove it first.
Yeah, hope for no win, right?
For no win.
Hope for no win, yeah.
Yeah, hope for, in general.
Sideways, running sideways.
Fun, look at it, oh, we jog, that would be it. I'm gonna start right.
I moved to a little specialty in permanent to Anne Marie Winchester for the break shade, more of a run schedule for April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine AM until ten AM, the setup beginning at seven AM, heading final signing, medical and EPW and certificate of liability insurance.
Second.
Ms. Conley, Ms. Harrison, Roll Callbuck.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You wanna raise that?
Yes, I hope so. I have some, uh, material I can leave with you if you are interested.
Please, yeah.
And certainly if you don't, you know, wanna share, please do that as well.
Yeah, sure, I guess you can take them.
Oh, awesome. Great, thank you very much. Thank you all, we must be a time, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Dungar, good acceptance, Stephen, uh, Harrowmaster with this. Vote Dan H. Shum.
Oh.
Yeah, and we have the backup, people need to know the story.
The story is.
So we just don't, yeah, we let you go through because it's sad, so.
So, um, second months ago, Suzanne, you called me for, uh, actually.
She calls and.
Yes, and then we discussed, uh, possibility of some sort of donation to our master's office. I didn't think it was gonna be generous as it was. Um, and you would ask, you know, for something, uh, like this. So I kind of put my thing cap on and we, with, um, something about this size. I wanted to keep it, you know, usable and, um, and I still am kind of forward that it's actually happening. Um, but it took several months and a lot of calls and emails and came down to the office and we met and, uh, kinda went over, you know, our thoughts about where it would be used in the river. Where the incident kind of placed, uh, in honor of their father. You wanna tell a story? I have it.
Yeah, I. She wrote this, I haven't reminded a little bit, but, uh. Good evening, uh, my sister Suzanne Fleming, uh, family, so my name, my Dunbar, and my family. Uh, wanted to honor the memory of my father by making him a get issued to the town, a little bit out of the master's office. Uh, you know, we do a charity as a family in nineteen seventy-two, it won't be too long. Uh, but, you know, I kind of fulfilled my father's dream of building a postal community. Uh, he was able to secure a slip down at Maria back in the early days and had several dead for forty years. So sailing was a big part of our life. Um, when we had kids of our own, you know, nothing made my father happier than, you know, going out for a sailboat. And, uh, we spent many days out on the sailboat on the coast, going down to the North River, part around the harbor. And just sitting on the boat watching five horses play, uh, at the, uh, the, uh.
Care, we can't, we can't.
Uh, we had many fine days, this is about a first story now. Uh, there was an incident on the way back to the harbor from a day sailing down to the North River. In an instant, an accidental jibe caused a boom to knock Suzanne in the head, broke my mother's arm. Uh, kinda took off my dad's face a little bit. But he was able to make a made day call and Harbor Master at the time, Mark Patterson, uh, responded promptly. After assessing and triaging the situation, he got injured back at the harbor and ambulances. It brought home to office, they put it at the role of Harbor Master place to keep him and the father safe. Uh, you know, I have to talk to Steve and finding out that he had a need for a patrol boat, that really resonated with us. So, uh, we're very happy to honor that, making this donation would make him proud and we're pleased for him to die. Donation to the town. So I actually reached out to Mark Patterson, um, to see if he could come this evening. Uh, he really was hoping he would be here, uh, he's in Florida. But, but he, he's here in spirit, um, and he was, he remembered the day and he was really, um, touched and honored that, you know, he was remembered as well. So, yeah. Now we see you've done a great job, so if you don't, I'll say, I'd like to.
Two quick thanks at that point, and I'll open it up. Um, one, it's fascinating to me how quickly you, we go from beautiful day on the water. Everything is fabulous, instantly, life has changed.
Yeah.
And you are, you feel that hit in your stomach and you better, we're hoping and praying that help is on the way.
Yeah.
And it's, it hits home hard and to talk to families within there is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing I was reading somewhere, faith in our local institutions, pressing my trees. Oh, yeah. And for something of this magnitude, um, for a donation is so heartwarming. And understand that we're in the neighbors and all of us up here and folks that work in our master's office, folks who dedicate their time to CPC and all of our other literal neighbors who coach and do everything and, and support all different committees and everything else. It is fascinating and wonderful and so heartwarming for us up here to have a family willing to do something like this and to give, hopefully, a little bit more faith. For that, as neighbor, gonna try our best, um, to help each other out, especially when things get rough. So thank you, uh, from the bottom of just my heart, because it's, 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 it's really wonderful, uh, what you're doing, you know, so I appreciate it. Karen, you'd like to add or?
No, you, you said it exactly right. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not there to shake your hand. Thank you for such a generous donation and such a tribute to your father. Um, and, and, and to be able to share that story is, uh, is very, um, educational for all that, um, use our waterways. So thank you for being here tonight and thank you so much for this.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, I would echo, thank you. So it's such a generous donation and, um, I would only add a very, it's, it's easy for, it, so quickly things can go wrong to even very experienced voters, right? So you can only imagine if you're not as experienced. And we all are very fortunate to have a robust Harbor Master's office.
Yes.
And thank you for contributing to that. Thank you.
Well, Suzanne was friends with my, don't call my baby brother yet, you know, he's over sixty. I didn't know how close we came to losing you. Really, I mean, that's an amazing story.
It's crazy.
She's lucky.
Yeah.
Would, just curious, was the weather bad or was it just the, the wind shifted? Are we up in the north?
In full disclosure, we were coming back from the North River and this one decided, I'm gonna float off the back one, too.
Oh, yeah.
And then he flipped over and that kinda caused the wind, you know, the, yeah.
It was a distraction.
It was a distraction.
My tan.
So it happened in an instant, too, you know.
We have adventures in voting, you never know what's gonna happen.
And my father was not, he was such a cautious person. For him to make it, he was horrified to have to make it in that situation.
Well, it's hard to make, I think, Dan is a wild man. Anyway, well, I'm so happy for you, um, that you can make this donation. It doesn't need a lot to be warm town and I live over in back of Kennedy's, so I always hear the helicopters and in the summertime and I'm like, oh my God, someone's in trouble up there because that's where people tend to get.
Yeah.
Coming there on the way back, so, but thank you, thank you so much. And I know, are we putting a little flag?
Yeah, I was gonna put a flag, you know, in memory of.
Great, great, that's great. Well, and a good story, good happy. Thank you so much.
All right, let's, and I have folks at home, remember, this is a, this is a devotion, this is, this is unbelievable, this is fabulous.
Add to the team.
Yes, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, move that the slot board, accept the Harbor Master Patrol Search and Rescue Vote Donation of approximately fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars in memory of Robert Bobdoma. Second.
Eric Seem's second, but Ms. Conley, Roll Callbuck.
Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes, but thanks.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
All right, thank you, Karen. Thank you.
And I said Mark Patterson will ever. Oh, and he, he did remember though, everything. I would tell him, it's like there's.
Sorry, Dan.
Yeah, it, it, the, the story didn't have the name of the two words.
I have to say, Mark Patterson was like Superman diving over the trench of, from one boat to another. He was amazing.
Must have, I mean, if you heard the two, and I'm not, seriously, he must have seen something wrong and it must have been scary. Get back and, you know, that and.
That's the way of getting hit by a boom.
Yeah, then you just kinda get low. Sorry, it's not terrible.
Well, it's not terrible, though.
No, it's good things. How are you now? I know, okay, so.
I'll put another hat on.
Put another hat on.
Well, thank you for giving, giving us the opportunity to come and present this again, uh, as we do, uh, every, before every town meeting. Um, a couple of things that I would mention, uh, before I start is, uh, the presentation I sent, which may be up there. Uh, there were a couple of changes, minor changes to the presentation. Uh, one was some of the information we didn't have yet at the time, uh, I sent it in last week. And, uh, a couple were just spelling mistakes and things like that. So I will correct them as we go along, but if you could put up the next slide. Uh, this is the, uh, revenues, the anticipated revenues that we have with the, uh, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. I would point out the, uh, top number is the, uh, tax revenue collected from the town, uh, about right in the middle of the, uh, slide, four hundred and thirty-three thousand is the state trust distribution, which is a match that we get every year. It's a little down because of the increase in participation in this program with other towns in the state, but, uh, still significant and I'll show you what the totals are in the next slide. Uh, the other thing I would mention is the, the numbers are required for, uh, historic preservation, open space and community housing are two hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is ten percent of the anticipated revenue, and this is an estimate, uh, which we have to sometimes adjust every year. And then the administrative fee, we never even get close to seventy-one thousand dollars in administrative fees. That's the minimum that we have to, uh, basically set aside. And when we don't use it, it goes back into the funds. So it's not that the money's being lost if we don't use it. And, uh, the next slide, you'll see where we stand with each of the, um, I'm sorry, the next slide is the estate match over the years. And the total's eleven thousand, I mean, eleven million dollars, uh, since we started the program. With the addition of four hundred and thirty-three, we'll be close to eleven and a half million and probably hit twelve million next year. If you could put the next slide up.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Does the percent really fluctuate on the state match? Is that, it's based on other town participation?
A lot of it is, uh, some of it's based on the amount of money that the state collects.
Okay.
They had changed, um, I'm trying to think what year they changed it. I think in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, uh, they increased the amount of revenue that they collected, uh, for this program, uh, through various, uh, fees and funds. But most of the changes you'll see is because of towns coming in, particularly some of the big cities that came into the program and are taking, you know, we have four hundred thousand dollars, uh, this year. Some other towns like Boston and Cambridge are getting two million dollars.
Right.
In the state match. So that takes away from the total fund that gets distributed to all the towns, a hundred and ninety-some towns that are participating throughout the state.
Yeah, okay.
So that is.
You look at twenty-two, almost fifty percent, and then twenty-four, where I look.
Yeah, and that was, uh, twenty.
It also depends on the state transactions.
Yes, the, the fees that they do collect.
Is it one percent or ten percent? Do they get two percent?
Uh, some amount, I believe, for every application, something like that.
Well, for, for every transfer of the.
Uh, so depending on how many deeds they're trading.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of like, for the, there's a lot of things that could make a change, right?
Yes.
Driver, like.
Yes.
Yeah, there are quite a few variables that determine how much money they end up, uh, having for the program. And then obviously how much they can distribute throughout the program.
Okay.
And not every town decides to contribute the maximum. So if you don't contribute the maximum, you don't get the maximum matched, it's, it's a somewhat complicated formula.
And towns decide that each year, so that.
Towns decide that when they decide.
When they decide it could.
If some, well, if some, if some town were to go back and say, no, we're, we're not gonna participate, uh, we're gonna, um, cut our participation, uh, contribution, that would have kept them that. I'm not preventing them doing it, but every so often you hear somebody ruckling about that. But, you know, it's, it's essentially, I'm sorry, free money.
Yeah, um, I, and, and my understanding is there haven't been any towns that have. My understanding, there haven't been any towns that have actually voted to rescind the.
Yeah.
Uh, the participation in the program, even though there have been some towns that have voted, have put it to a town meeting. Uh, next slide is where we stand with each of the categories, historic, reserve, open space, community housing. The top, uh, four or five lines of the spreadsheet are what we allocated at the last town meeting in, uh, November. And then, um, we do have the fifteen hundred and twelve dollars that was just a shortage that we had in the, uh, uh, in one of the set-asides that will go back into, uh, that go back into the fund and that will be voted, uh, in the special town meeting, uh, for the purposes of getting the money back quick. Uh, the two hundred and eighty-four thousand is what's required by the act to put into community housing, historic and open space buckets, what, what I call. And then we do have a debt service on the athletic fields from several years ago of, uh, two hundred and fifty thou, fifty-one thousand. And then we have the, um, articles that we're proposing for the next town meeting, which are the basketball courts, uh, the sail project, the Bates House and City Point and Black Pole. I'll go into those in detail. So we end up, the point being, we end up with about three million dollars left, uh, continuing on. And that's a running total because we, we continue to get more money into the fund. And, uh, we still have funds left over for projects that were anticipated. because we, we continue to get more money into the fund, and we still have funds left over for projects that we're anticipating coming up in the next year or two. The, the one thing I would point out, we do have an open space project that we expect to be coming up, so that six hundred and ninety-five thousand is important to keep in there, and we do have money in the undesignated fund that we'll be adding to, that we're anticipating for the basketball court project instruction that will be coming up. Uh, next slide. So these are the four projects and the amounts that we're voting on, will be voted on. We do have one project, the Bates House, that we have not voted on yet because we're still gathering information for that. I put a placeholder in for two hundred and fifty thousand, more than likely that will change to six hundred and eighty thousand, which is the estimates that we're getting from the contractors for the repairs to the Bates House, so that would, that was a, a pretty big increase, but that's what things are costing these days. Uh, one thing that we have seen, and one of the steps we've taken in a lot of these applications and projects, is to do it in two phases, one is the planning phase, the permitting phase, quoting, bidding, things like that, and then the second part is to go and secure funds for the actual construction of the project. And the reason why we've come to that is because a lot of the estimates we get, by the time the project gets to town meeting, and then the funds become available, by that time, the cost of everything has gone up, in some cases fifty percent, in some cases twenty percent, but significant cost increases over time, particularly since twenty twenty. Uh, we've seen that quite a bit. Uh, there was a project that was tabled, if you could show the next slide, that we're expecting to come back next year, next town meeting, and that is what they call the Dishpan Properties, which is two properties off of Clack Road, Booth Hill, uh, Booth Hill Road, which you can see on the map there, they are two properties, one is landlocked, but the other is not, they are but conservation properties, and I think they are very desirable properties for the town to obtain. We are currently working on that, we have an estimate of, of what the sellers are looking for, but what we will do and will vote on this Monday is to allocate some of the administrator funds to do an actual assessment of the property, and that will be the amount that we'll have to work off of with the seller. Uh, the other thing we'll have to do at times, prepare a purchase and sale, so we have that in place before your town meeting, so we don't run into some of the problems that we have in the past. And just for your information, this property is about sixteen point four acres between the two properties. The first property that we have voted for, for the town meeting coming up is the, I'll call it the basketball slash pickleball courts, if you could put up the next slide, and these are the Kazlowski Courts, as they're known, behind the high school. The two courts down at the bottom are being completely refurbished as, or the plan is to refurbish them as basketball courts, and the basketball court on top of the screen is being planned to have both basketball and pickleball courts configured on that space. The, the courts are over twenty years old, they have been heavily used by the community, particularly the two down at the bottom, if you could go to the next slide. Are very heavily used by the town, both off-hours and on-hours, they're used during school and, and on the weekend, my son still plays on those and he's still, you know, he's twenty-seven years old. So there is a severe need in town to repair these, they are very much disrepair. Uh, there was a study spent last year, a study done last year that the Sichewood Basketball Association spent about thirty-five thousand dollars to do that determined that the, the surface of the courts are basically unreparable with the uh, moisture content in the concrete and what's underneath them, they determined that they could not be repaired or repairing them would just be throwing good money after that, and they determined that they need replacing, and that's what this project is for. The North Court is a lesser used court, it's typically used for their, when they have competitions and events that are there, it's less used than the other two, so the intent is to make those into dual basketball and pickleball courts. There have been quite a few discussions on pickleball courts and where we can put them and where we can't put them. Uh, where we can't put them is probably a bigger issue for the town, but we felt that this would be a good location to add pickleball courts to the town because there is a significant need for pickleball courts in town, and I think this will help alleviate the problem, perhaps not a hundred percent, but certainly make it better than it is today. The, the requested funds for this town meeting will support the survey, geotechnical investigations, the design, and assistance with the bidding and public procurement. Uh, the funds for construction are estimated about, for about a million dollars, hopefully that will not go up in the next six months or so, and I do have to thank Mark Milback for, for providing this information and, and working with these projects as a project manager, basically, for the town, and just doing a great job. Um, Mark is a citizen and a, of Sichewood, and I think the work he's done has just been fantastic with CPC, and we really appreciate him being able to take over some of these projects and deliver them to the town, so, thank you, Mark.
Can I ask a question about the, there are houses, M one close?
Yes.
Is that, is that a concern? I don't know how close is too close to the.
Yeah, and just for your information, one of the things we, we ask as part of the process is to have a butters meeting
Okay.
with the neighbors, because I do know that if people read about pickleball in the newspaper, noise is one of the issues that has come up with pickleball courts. So one of the plans is to have a butters meeting when the, assuming this project is funded at the town meeting.
Okay.
It will likely, it will likely be a problem, the noise. Uh, but I guess my question is to, to that point, um, who's gonna be in charge of saying who can play basketball versus pickleball?
Recreation Department.
Okay, so they will be scheduled?
Yes, that's the plan right now, yes.
Back away real quick, the, the third court with the ball courts are proposed, is used for basketball, but it's not commonly used for basketball, it's only for really special events like three hundred and three, like in summer, Big Al Quarterback. Um, also the rest of the time, it won't be available for.
It's, um, it's, it's a problem, the noise is a problem, it's a different noise than any other noise, than any other, tennis balls don't make the same noise, basketballs don't make the same noise, so.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the reason why the CPC has asked us to watch this around, and have a public meeting about it uh, prior to town meeting, so, um, I'm on the SBA board with David Mayer, the advocate, um, so we're going to have a informational public meeting, well, everybody but butters. And I don't know if you guys will voice.
Well, I guess what I'd like to say is if it's being designed as both pickleball slash basketball court, then if pickleball does become an issue in terms of the noise, then you just cut it down for that purpose, you don't have to, you're not just abandoning
Yep.
a court.
That's entirely a possibility, Conley, we're not permanently proposing to install the nets, they'll be, um, cordial.
Right, and we're still doing.
For certain hours, right, like, early or.
Well, and I, yeah.
Six AM.
No, I, I, it was summer, the sun's, sun's up early.
Three.
But we're still doing pickleball courts behind the old game school, yes?
Yes.
And that's not gonna be.
Yeah, so those will stay there as well.
Yeah, those will stay there as well.
Alright, well.
And I, I would also, just anecdotally, I would also expect this to be less noise than the PA system, the football field, for the neighbors behind, but.
There's something different kind of noise, because I was near.
I know that's been the issue with the town.
It, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a different noise, and, and there will be different times, so, obviously, it's a concern.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, yeah, this is not too, never.
Yeah, but again, I mean, if it's, if it's being designed as a dual purpose, and if one of the purposes turns out to be incredible nuisance, then you just don't do it, you know? So.
Yes.
That's, you know, it's, like I said, it's not like if we do it, we have to abandon it, I, I wouldn't rather just see money spent that way, but you know, it works out that it's compatible and it's not driving people crazy, because they are.
And I do have to say, we, we have asked the folks that came to us about pickleball to consider several locations, and there hasn't been an ideal location that I've heard of yet. And I know there are some locations that have been proposed and totally shut down, and we just have not found a location right now that would be an ideal situation given the noise and the issues with noise and butters.
I'm gonna give you a new one that you want, I think hopefully it'll, it'll cause a little bit of controversy in town, we talked about it a little bit. Well, no, because there has been some, the, I'm, right around the corner, behind the high school, the wooden structure, Slinterville, is what I call it.
Slinterville, yeah.
You know, over there, um, which is even further away from you for other folks, and I know we're having some discussions in the van, which would be different with that space.
Well, it's unused.
Considering it's unused.
Unused.
Flat, right there, or far away, so just, for smart people who are thinking about things we may have to do, that might be another, and again, I don't wanna stop this one because you're gonna shut down just do basketball, but.
Yeah, and, and frankly, I look at this as, as really almost a temporary measure, it's a, it's a temporary fix for a need that's in town.
Yeah.
And there is a, a very heavy need for pickleball courts. Of course.
We're gonna schedule.
But are, are the pickleball people who are all designers, those, those people who, those people?
People raise money on designing these.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I know I've read that there's been a lot of attention paid to the ball, because it seems to be that that's what
Yes, sir.
makes the noise, on the other hand, is anyone looking at the actual surface so that it would absorb sound rather than, I, I'm just.
Yeah, whoever.
Scary area, that's.
I know that there's a lot of smart people, that's one of them, and I am looking into it, um, because there's a lot of money, and that is something we can solve, because it's not just our community that's dealing with the, the nuisance that they call sound, um, it is literally every community in town, trying to find a space that works for a bit more, so. Do I have to answer that, you know, um, at least at this point, um, but I know that a lot of people are like, just like, just put out there, yeah.
I did notice in, I think it was Norwell or, or, hang on, uh, there's an indoor pickleball, pickleball facility now.
So, get to that next, you just wait, we have two other locations, hold on, we're gonna solve everything tonight, pickleball. I love being in there.
Hey, any other questions, uh? Okay, now.
Karen's good, alright.
Okay, the, um, sale is the Supported Access for Independent Living, a project that was brought to town meeting and funded for a million dollars last year. After the, um, excuse me, the, the budget was approved, and after that was approved, they revised the budget, went out and got quotes and permits and other things, and determined that uh, there was an additional six hundred thousand at least needed for this project, so a, a very late request came in, late for CPC, came in that we entertained, and because of the nature of the project, it's already underway, number one, uh, the importance that we feel about this project, I think it is a great project for the town to, to take on a complete, uh, we allowed the, the late application and approved it at one of our meetings in want to take to a town meeting. So this is, again, it's a facility to provide affordable units for adults with intellectual and development disabilities and/or autism, uh, the total cost of the project is about three point three million dollars. Uh, they, they are asking Sichewood to provide the additional one, uh, one million dollars and an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, for the project, and they're also getting other funds to complete the project as well. So the preliminary budget apparently came in a little low, uh, I wouldn't say low, I think the cost of everything went up, and there were some unanticipated uh, costs that were things like replacing windows was determined as a requirement for the facility, there were insulation costs, electrical plumbing, uh, and fire and safety costs to be able to outfit the facility with the proper equipment in order to house the people that will be living there. So, uh, we approved the request for seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is about, which includes about a fifty percent uh, contingency, so it was about six hundred and sixty thousand, I think, was the quote that was gotten, and we asked them to bring, to bump that up so we don't run into the same problem six months from now or a year from now when they start the actual, uh, uh, facility construction.
Um, again, I think it's a great project, my questions are, how many phases are there and what do we know timeline, like, when it's gonna be?
Okay, I'll defer, I'll defer to Mary now.
Well, because I drive by it all the time, and like, it's the same tunnels in the life, in the parking lot.
So, they, they started demolition in July of twenty twenty-four, and Shepherd Construction Development is our, our project manager, Mark Shepherd. Basically, when they opened up that building to look and see what the infrastructure was, there was a lot missing there in terms of what Dan recognized as insulation, um, majority of the windows were failing, the electrical was over thirty years of being hodgepodge put together, so that's what really brought up the cost. Additionally, some safety measures were put in, a script was system throughout, and there needs to be, um, direct um, access to the fire department and the police department, that's another fifty-five thousand dollars. So all said and done, this whole building has been really gutted, the entire interior of it, let's see about a square feet. So, um, it is under demo, they're currently, um, it's full, it's a go, if you drive by there right now, it's nothing but um, contractor trucks. The, um, timeline is headed complete by August of twenty twenty-five, and currently we are, you know, doing our applications for our residents, um, and we hope to have those identified by June, and then once we're up and running, um, and building is fully appointed, we'll start transitioning these folks and hope to have them there by January of twenty twenty-six.
That's great.
I do have one issue for you.
Sure.
I've mentioned this to a few other communities, other folks.
Yes.
And they all loved the idea, they all wanted to do it.
I know.
Uh, seriously, this is such a fabulous thing, it's up and down, um, you're at Polk County, folks in Norfolk County were like, this is really an idea, kind of the length, this is fabulous, so. Yeah, it's super important, um, great question about how, how a little process could work, so anyway.
Okay.
No, that's it, just get ready.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
That's it. So you're gonna be busy.
Yeah.
Trying to replicate this.
We are, and it's really, really impressive in that, um, there have been so many communities that have reached out, and, and I also wanna let you know, look at this community at large, many, many people are contributing in the eye. We have a painter, Mark Valby, local guy, he's been a peak painter for a group. Um, we have George Tomma, who perused on WATV, and he literally called Bob Shepherd and said, what's this sale project? And he's basically. And he's basically giving us most of the fines packages for lower cost.
Love it.
So it's a huge initiative, we need to make this successful and the idea is to replicate this. There is such a need for this and there is just not enough state blue homes, which is the only other model really, um, to really address this population. And, and then the other thing I'd share with the group is that out of the eight residents, I anticipate that I'm gonna come five will be from SituWit. We set up a parameter so that anybody that was applying to this project has, has to live within fifty miles of the development. So we're not disrupting their lives, so that their family, their close and all their well-being supports are, are nearby. And that would be, again, our, our model going forward.
Thanks. Thank you. What I'd like to say is it's so good, it's a community initiative. It's not somebody, a developer coming in and jamming something down our throats and pretending that it's, we're all for the good. It's not the state, I mean, we appreciate what the state does, but not the state coming in and telling us what to do. So I think it's, it's a great thing that it's a community initiative. So thank you for doing it and thank you for the C B C leadership on this. Not an insignificant amount of money, especially not.
But it's, it's money well spent.
Thank you everybody so much because this project wouldn't be realized without the support of the S C C P A. So we're super appreciative.
I have one other question and I don't remember, are there, and this is, we're doing a lot of the belt in North, in North SituWit.
Yeah, we will be.
Yes. Anticipating sewer and whatnot and really thinking about like walkability. And I know this is really close, are there like sidewalks in the front of the building?
Um, I haven't actually gotten to the point, sewer is, we know is coming.
It is, hopefully.
Yes.
Yep, oh, it's coming.
It's coming.
Seven hundred, seven hundred days, seven hundred days.
Is that it? Because I actually reached out to that, I guess one of the engineers, I don't know what it's, more, who's the engineer?
Oh, Woodwork.
Woodwork, yeah, yeah. And we've been in touch with them, they've actually gone out to the project and met with the project manager to determine where the sewer line would go. One of the things we're kind of working on is we do have, we have a septic system, we have to stop. And now for a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh.
So we're trying to work with board health, Morris Engineering and see if there's something that we can do to use. There is an existing septic system that will take up to, I think, seven bedrooms. So we're gonna see if we can do some kind of waiver in the interim, that's kind of in the, we have to put the septic in and we will. Um, but hopefully not. But to your point about sidewalks, I don't know if sewer coming in and all of the development that's absolutely encircling us, that there isn't a plan in the town for sidewalks.
That's what I keep asking, but that's something I'm, you know, we're trying to think about. Make sure that like, I don't wanna get to a point where, oh, everyone did their like one development and then there's.
We can't walk there.
Oh, yeah, wow, especially driving cars.
It's really crucially important, but not anything I've yet felt into.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking whatever, whatever development's gonna happen up there and I'm sorry to rain on this parade, but you're not getting sewer for next year.
Oh, yeah, not.
Twenty twenty seven, but yeah, that's what they're told.
Yeah.
That's, that's optimistic.
Right.
Um, but, you know, once development does start up there, planning board can certainly require sidewalks and maybe can require them to put them in front of places that they want them to actually be.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think they're, you're right though, I mean.
But the development is happening at all different times and you wanna make sure you don't get to a point where you're like, oh, but no, I'm not about sidewalks.
That's what we're.
Anyway, it's for us to talk to the planning board about.
We have, you know, we, clearly they are a population, we clearly want sidewalks.
Yeah, right.
Everybody wants sidewalks. They drive, they use the M V T A, you know, they wanna be able to access more situWit.
Of course, yeah, of course.
And I, I will say, C P C does not usually accept applications several months after the, after the deadline. This is just such a great project and already in construction. Uh, it was just important to get this as soon as possible. So we did allow that, allow this to come forward and hopefully get past it down here.
Thank you for your judicious consideration.
Yeah. Um, so the next project is the, the Bates House restoration and renovation. Uh, I put a placeholder of two hundred and fifty thousand, just throwing a number against the wall because we didn't have all the information yet. We have not voted on this yet. We will be voting on this hopefully at the March tenth meeting that we'll be having and finish the final vetting of the project and vote on it then. But this is, uh, the, the historic Bates House study done last September determined there were serious structural issues that required repointing foundations, beam replacement, placing the roof uh, and other things interior. So a lot of work needs to be done on this to get it back up. Uh, there are A D A standards that are not being met with access, uh, that need remediation in the structure. So the engineering recommended a floor place plan to address the issues. In, in conjunction with this, the town is filing for a mass cultural council grant of two hundred thousand. Uh, it will require a historic architect similar to the way the White House was handled uh, so that the historic value of the house is maintained and not destroyed. And the request for C P C funds was to begin the, the whole process and, and now lead construction of it. The updated numbers seem to be the final design bidding and construction, uh, management, about seventy thousand dollars. And it's expected the budget to be about four hundred and eighty thousand for the construction of, and that includes about an eighty thousand dollar contingency. So the total project will probably end up, excuse me, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, that we will look at for the, for the upcoming town meeting. And after the meeting in March, we'll update you on, on what happened at our meeting, assuming that it passes, what we did agree to and what we will be taking to the town meeting. The last project is a smaller project, it's the Cedar Point flagpole. So if you look at this, this sign there, when you drive into Cedar Point, the flagpole right behind where the sign is in the intersection there, excuse me, the, the flagpole is quite old and is not workable. It's over forty years old is what I found out. Uh, the original pole's about three thousand dollars for the new pole and that includes, um, uh, a contingency built in as well. And then the Cedar Point Association is also committing an additional four hundred dollars for the project. This should be a fairly simple replacement of a pole, assuming that this gets passed. And we did vote unanimously to approve your request. You have any questions on that? Yes?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Who puts the flag up and down every day?
That I don't know.
Not us.
Not you. Um, are we putting up a, are we, does he have a flag pole that no one's gonna be in charge of?
Well, I know nobody's gonna put it up because you can't right now.
Well, but now that we're.
But I will, so I will ask Mr. Ball if he can help, uh, who will be doing that and who will be rescinding.
Well, I, I frankly would like to submit it from the Cedar Point Association that.
I would expect them to be able to do it.
They will figure it out, but I don't wanna see that flagpole go up and, oh, no one is gonna fly up and take the flag down.
Real flag house mass what they were created on.
Appropriately when it's supposed to be, yeah. And, you know, I don't have to tell anyone who we all know down there, the flags aren't gonna last. So, um, you know, this is not just three thousand, this could be three thousand dollars if we finish.
Sure. That's it, I will find out for you.
And we have been told by the town administrator that we have enough flags to put up and down.
We, we do not get eleven, eleven, eleven.
So. I mean, I'm not trying to be un-Patriotic.
No, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Mr. Ball about that and get to an answer.
Yeah. The Bates House, Dan, do we get rent from the, does, does the town get rent from that?
The rent goes to the SituWit Historical Society, that's the only act at least we have and that would be something that'll be coming back to you.
That will be coming back to us?
That may be coming back to you.
Okay, but we do, who gets the rental from the?
SituWit Historical Society for Bates. We get it from Man House and White House.
I was just gonna say, the Man House, I know, we heard about.
And so does Light, so does the West.
Right. Because if we're gonna be investing in a, I, I don't know what the rate of someone's paying down there now is, but there might be a rent adjustment necessary on the tank. If we're substantially improving the property to make it more desirable and available. So.
Okay, the, the last slide I have is the rescinding that we're proposing for the upcoming town meeting. Uh, this, hey, this is the new amount, thank you very much. Um, I had a typo on the original one that I sent out, excuse me. But these are projects that we contacted, uh, everybody in charge of the project. Uh, most of these, all but one of these projects have been completed with some funds left over. Uh, the one project that was canceled was the M V T A burn crossing project for seventy seven and change, seven thousand dollars and change. Uh, a couple of comments I'd make here, the historic fire truck restoration had, had forty thousand dollars left over because they used a lot of resources from the vocational school to do the work there. And if you have seen the fire truck, it's beautiful, uh, they did a great job. I, I do have to say, the wood on that is just fantastic and the job they did restoring that and finishing it, it's a, it's a beautiful truck right now, um, and hopefully it will be used quite often. Uh, the other, uh, project that has some significant funds was the Cole Parkway Bandstand and benches and that's basically on hold because of the whole situation with Cole Parkway. So we did ask to have that taken back and Purple Dinosaur Playground came in, eighteen thousand dollars under what we allocated, so that was a good thing. So we end up with about a hundred and ninety four thousand dollars that will be taken back into the funds and be able to use that for future projects. Any questions on this? And thank you very much, I appreciate your time and, and hearing me out again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
You've done a great job and holding it all together for such a long time. I personally appreciate it and thank you guys.
Well, I hadn't planned on being here this long, but.
I know.
I won't comment on that.
But I, you know, I was like, please, Dan, please, but you please. I don't think he anticipated, but I.
Thank you.
So much for the shit.
Cushion school, future plans, and Nancy, Nancy, all right, though.
How are you doing? I appreciate this one. Well, that's fun. I want you to know the, the song, the wheels in the last four round and rolling are now stuck in my head forever.
Interesting.
I know, I'm just sharing because I just can't get it out of my brain. Regardless. So what I just want to forge, um, if they would consider, considering what they would want to do with that Cushion School site once the school was demolished and the school could be turned over to us because the new school is starting construction probably in September and it'll be up and built and will be stuck with Cushion, nothing done about it. Um, so the current Cushion Havley Elementary School project only includes demolition of the school. So that'll leave you with basically green space and home and park.
So can I ask, when do we think it'll be demolished?
It'll be demolished, Havley will be demolished first, um, and then they'll come over to Cushion and do it. So probably they, it might be twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight.
Twenty twenty seven?
Yeah, because it'll be the last thing they do.
Okay.
Because they'll wanna get off the Havley site.
Yeah.
Right, so talk about something for Havley, what you say, Cushion.
Probably twenty twenty eight.
For Cushion.
We'd be looking at demolishing it and that's one of the things they would have to be done. Havley should be, should be done February twenty twenty seven. Um, and then once the children are out of school in June, they'll start demolition on that school, but it probably won't be completely done by the time the kids move in, we'll do as much as possible. Um, so once that's done, then they'll come over to Cushion. My guess is they'll wanna be out of that, uh, before the end of the calendar year, but it all depends on the weather and what they find. I don't know if they can have a, a team that's working on Havley and then just move over to Cushion while the demolition team is working on Havley.
Yeah, I have a demolition question.
Can I push the button?
Can I?
No.
No.
No, the, the demolition question I have is, we know that they will not leave a big mess eyesore slash pile of junk in front of the new Havley school. Do we have the same expectation of the Cushion school? That it will not be a pile of concrete and junk and look like an abandoned piece of junk, that's. Then remove the building material?
Uh huh.
Including foundation.
Yeah, I mean flatten out, I'm assuming flatten out, but I'm not. Depending on until the big goes out, there's nothing in there to like, make it pretty, there's nothing in there to make fields. They're not gonna take as far as we know the pavement up because there's nothing in there for it, it's just the demolition of the existing pole.
You're, you're talking about Cushion?
Yeah. I guess the expectation is that we're not gonna leave a similar mess in front of the new Havley Cushion, whatever it's called, school. But I would like to think that whatever we do, that we not leave, we, we, we don't allow whoever's doing the demolition to leave a big mess at the site of Cushion School. I'm not expecting turf fields, I'm not, anything we want to do with it, quote unquote, will clearly take money, budget money, it probably be seen here, you know, depends on what we decide to do with it. But I just wouldn't wanna see the Cushion School site look like, you know, a war zone. And that's why I work, I wanna have this discussion with the board now to, to, because we need to start planning so that we'll have something in place for the residents to think about. Um, right now, if you're not familiar where Cushion is, Cushion is right up behind the high school and gates. So if you don't have a child in Cushion or have, never had a child in Cushion, you don't know where these things are. Um, so it's nicely adjacent to those two schools. Right now, you can see, um, that, uh, a field that is at Cushion is a grass field. Grass fields will not work up there, there is not, there are water limitations, so that's problematic. So anything in a future discussion that the board may wanna look at or that residents may be interested in would have to be of the turf variety. And that's potentially fundable through C P C, um, but older for the site preparation like it was with the fields out here, um, but not for the turf.
Not for the artificial.
That doesn't mean that's what residents want up there. So what I wanted to have the board to start thinking about, do we wanna leave this as a green space for the crumbling pavement? What is the eventual use for this property? Um, and this is something that we could put onto, uh, capital plan and start maybe with a, a feasibility study or maybe just start with a survey, what do you wanna see, like we do with Pier Forty Four? Do you wanna have multi-use fields? Do you wanna have a turf field? Do you wanna have a walk and trot? Do you wanna just leave it walk and trot? Do you wanna leave it as a green area? Would you rather see it as a municipal school storage area? Um, and then based on the results of some things such as a survey, we could then put on the capital plan and commission a feasibility study for future base, for future use. So basically, I want, I think the, the short request out of this is, if you're interested, do you want to do something such as a survey, like we do with Pier Forty Four and see what people wanna see at that site in the future? Because as you said, anything. Because as you said, anything that happens, it's going to have a cost.
Well, I guess my personal opinion is just thinking about it out loud. One of the issues is, it's a big, there's a neighborhood up there. And in order to access that, that site easily with a car, you're driving through that big neighborhood and I'm sure they won't want a lot of traffic. I will say that from Pier Forty-four, we're still getting the pie in the sky, why can't it be an Italian restaurant? I kid you not. So, you know, you can do all the Survey Monkey stuff you want, but you're still gonna get a lot of pie in the sky, wouldn't it be nice to have a carousel? I mean, you're gonna, that's, that's my concern with starting it that way. I think that I would prefer that we put together some sort of a, a working group, not a formal committee or anything, but to, to sort of get some ideas that we know are practical versus impractical. So, and I think, I guess what I'm getting at about that, that demolition issue, whatever they're doing up at Havillier School to demolish that school, I'm assuming they're leaving that the site of the demolition in some sort of...
A site of demolition is part of the new, is part of the new school grounds, I understand, so I am, it's appropriate, but
I, I guess what I'm getting at is, they're, they're not gonna leave a big mess inside of the new Havillier School when they do, when they demolish the old Havillier School. So I would hope that however we write the RFP, that it's, it's in a condition that doesn't look, let's use an example, that it doesn't look like the old Jamie's site down in Morris City for the next ten years, with weeds growing and just, you know, and having to, have chain link fences around it, so I just don't wanna see that happen. So I'm hoping that whatever we budget for the demolition, is, is that, that's a line I'm in, the school budget, isn't it?
It, it is in the project, that's, yeah.
I put it in there, so that we can now number Gates.
Yeah, and that, I think that's exactly what the part of this is, so if we know we're gonna do X, Y, Z, we won't have those, we won't have those fences, we won't have, so with that demolition, that's why we have to kind of move this along, so we can say, hey, we're gonna demolish it.
The, the only problem is, is that to get to that point where we know what we wanna do with it, it's, it's not gonna be easy. Because there's gonna be all kinds of different things, and a lot of them lies when we depend on the budget that we jump cap or don't cap. Because clearly, where it's located, for it to, for it to be appended to the high school slash that whole complex would be ideal. But whatever you might wanna do with it, in terms of athletics, probably gonna cost you money, significant money. But, so I'd just like to say, I, I think a working group, people just come up with some ideas that are potentially doable versus, you know. Thank you.
Yes, Karen.
Nancy, thank you for bringing this to our attention at this moment, because you're absolutely right, it's, we wait until construction starts, we're way too late, so I think this is a great time to have this conversation. I, I agree that we need to vet some of the sort of realistic uses for, that potential uses for this, before putting it out to the public for their input, because because I think the sensitivity to the existing neighborhood has to be part of that conversation. One thing we haven't talked, one thing I don't think we would even talk about if we weren't in this particular financial environment, is an option that we could pursue, I think, right Nancy? Is, we could sell it for home development. Which I hate to get rid of land because we never ever have land and have revenues, but if we look out for the next ten, fifteen years, at what our capital requirements are, unless something there can be funded through, is either a low cost or can be funded through CPC, I can't see this site bumping up in priority over some of the things that we know have to be done down the road. And so, I don't know, I, I, is that a matter of, not that I'm advocating for it, but I just wanna know it's possible. We would have to declare it surplus and sell it, how would that work, Nancy?
You would declare, once it is turned over from the school community to the select board, select board would declare it a surplus and then it could be auctioned.
We'd have to auction it, okay.
Oh, no, I mean, you could do what we're doing at the Old Gates, you could do an RFP for what you wanna see there. Wouldn't have to just sell it, you could have a development we're doing at the Old Gates.
Okay.
But we also have, it is part of the larger property, so we have to break it off from the larger high school property.
So I think that we need to look, we have a, we have a very solid master plan that has a lot of priorities that the community's already put a lot of time in to say, these are the things we want in our community, and now we have a site. So I think you're right, we need to put together a group to work with the master plan and to vet some of these things, and then, and then the next step would be to present those to the public for further input. But, you know, we're not starting from scratch, we already, we already did a ton of community outreach. And we know people want affordable housing, people want open space, people, you know, they want a hockey rink, you know, so it's like, yeah. And this is, this is really a unique opportunity for, how, how large is this site? It, it's big.
It depends on if you wanna only use what cleared, or if you wanna clear more of it, that was the reason why the Havillier Cushing School ended up being at the Havillier site because the drop-off on this site and what you would have to do to clear it side of another school was just, not a good idea.
Right, right, okay. Well, even what's cleared now, once that building's gone, is a pretty substantial site.
Yeah, and you're putting, and you're putting.
Baseball field, yeah.
But yeah, well, how many acres?
I don't know how it comes out.
Couple acres, it has storage.
Couple what?
Couple acres, anyways, it has storage.
Really? Please. I'm guessing, I guess it's four. Sorry, you're.
Well, I was just gonna say, Karen, to your point that, you know, if this sale project works out as well as I think we all hope it would, then a community-based effort to do more of that sort of housing that fits in with that neighborhood and wouldn't result in huge amount of traffic, that might be something. But again, that's why I would think that if we were to form a small group, comb through the master plan, see what's in there, and see, you know, is there something that would be suitable or that we could afford and that we could fund and that would be agreeable to the neighbors, would be probably ideal. So.
I'd like the idea, have folks go together and give them, and and kind of develop some of those, those ideas. I, I do think though that we have to, or this is gonna be a community conversation, we have to kind of start the conversation. I would love to know, like, where, where are we at? Right, I mean, what, what do you really wanna see at the site? This is why people elected us to try to make some of these decisions, like, so Karen, do you want, if you had your brothers, do you think housing, do you think wreck? What do you think the community, I mean, we know the master plan, we know some of our needs. What would you do, or what would you, is it housing, I guess that's part of this too, I'd like to know from all of us kind of where we are.
At, at this point, given, given the world and our finances, I think some, some kind of housing would be my first choice, whether it's, you know, we donate the land to a sale organization, or it's a, you know, we do an RFP for senior housing, or whatever, you know. I think it is the least impactful in the neighborhood. And, you know, and I wouldn't take off the table, auctioning it for private only from a growth standpoint. Not, probably wouldn't be my first choice, but it might be a fiscally prudent thing to pursue. But I, I think that our need for affordable housing and senior housing is, is above, above the, above that in my, my list of things.
Else? I'm just trying to figure out where, like, trying to temperature where people.
I'd like to point out that we did donate the land for the Blossom Green Apartments. And I think that worked out very well with some investment of CPC funds. I would like to think that a similar model could be used for this property without being too disruptive to the neighborhood. And again, I'm looking at the sale project and thinking that if that is successful and people embrace it the way Marynell told me they're embracing it, then it would be something that I'm, I'm loathe to put the land up for auction and take our chances with the developer. So I, I would like it to be a community initiative.
Hey, thoughts or unknown to the board or?
Well, no, my, I thought, I mean, I agree with you, housing, I don't disagree with that. I, what I struggle with is location, 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 and it just seems very close to all the other fields, and seems to me like a good place for fields. But I also, I mean, like, we have the Old Gates, it's been sitting there for how many years now, is it eight? And nothing's been done with that, so. And do, do you think it's there and do we have it here?
I don't think school is a bigger challenge.
No, I know it's a bigger challenge, I know.
So many reasons, so many reasons.
I know, but I, then we dive into this and we've got, we have Old Gates that I know, so, oh, like.
Well, I'm not sure we're gonna get to the point where we uh, have too much housing, I don't think.
I hope we can get to a point where it's fifteen years and we've got an empty school building. That's my concern.
Or, or school.
Something jumped up, jumps the line and then we still have this vacant building.
Or vacant, yeah, vacant lot.
Vacant lot, I mean, I'm, I mean vacant building.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
That will never care down in twenty years from now, we still are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to keep a vacant building. So I keep thinking location, but I, I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't be a good location because it's similar to whatnot, but I still think like you can't, it's a perfect location for more related to the high school.
All right, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you where I am, I'm, as of now, I'm intrigued by the housing option. I, my gut tells me that we're gonna get, you're gonna be saying it, no way, Jose? I don't like that at all. I think, let's say if my gut's right, that if we do this through the survey, folks are gonna say, let's just, let's do fields, whether probably charred. And if, and if we can do that, the least expensive option, I think that's like the art of the possible that might actually get done. I think we should explore, and it seems like both of you wanna explore housing, so I think we should put that to the survey and then, I just, I'm not, I'm not hearing, I'm not.
I don't wanna explore it, I just wanna also make sure we don't.
I just, I wanna focus, just like you said, I don't want folks going, you know, we need a big swimming pool right there and hockey rink and an arcade and everything, no, let's have some focus on what we're talking about, so.
Well, I think whatever it is needs to be affordable to the town. Like, you have a lot of other priorities and a pool and a hockey rink, it's not in that picture. I'm gonna have to say it right now, like, a turf baseball field is a little bit more affordable than a.
Right. Right.
Little bit, I suppose.
Not that I would ever recommend the one, a hockey rink or a pool, you would have somebody else do it.
Right, so, yeah.
To say, throw out a piece of building, school get the use of it, blah, blah, blah. I would never recommend doing it ourselves and putting it in.
Well, I mean, so I'll, I'll throw it out, this is why we're here. Would we be open to sell it for hockey? Everyone's asked us that. I don't, no one's gonna wanna, because you can't make money on the deal. You can't get there because you gotta drive through the, the traffic going in and out is gonna be miserable.
Traffic, I'll be.
But do you want this study group to talk about it?
See no reason I can't.
Okay, that's, no, that's fair, I just.
I see no reason why, yeah, I mean, the thing about a piece of property, as long as it's not an eyesore, just sit on it for, until you make a decision, like I said, it can't be an ice.
Yeah, right.
That's not, number one concern, not an eyesore. And then, whatever amount of time it takes to reach a consensus as to what we as the community want and what the neighborhood wants, and it is reasonable and what we can afford to do, and, you know, it may turn out that it's gonna take us ten years to to do something like build a hockey rink, so, I don't know.
Right, yeah, I guess, I want, what are the, what are the parameters, what are we saying? Does that make sense here, or am I off?
No, I think you're right, the other factor here that we haven't talked about is, so, yeah, there's a, there's a serious grade change there. But so let's say, you know, we're like, oh, we're nuts if we, you know, because of the adjacency, if we don't, you know, connect it to the high school, middle school complex in some way and use it for something, right? I think if we, if we are gonna explore looking at sort of record, I think you're right, Andrew, I think people are gonna go, no, we need open fields, and Nancy's already said, well, it's gonna have to be turf and we had to spend a million dollars on the high school, so you know, we can quickly back of the envelope and talk about what that's gonna cost. But we need to factor in if you're gonna limit access from, from south, you know what I'm saying? That's a big number, I don't know, it's, I just, I don't know. I'm just thinking through, if, if you wanna limit the impact on the neighborhood and it's gonna be a public use, it has to be connected to the high school somehow.
All right, so we're here, oh, sorry, didn't need to.
No, no, I, that, I'm just.
All right, so let's live, so, ready, I love the, looks like we wanna do the, the group, a working group to come back with some of those recommendations. Let's open my hearing, they'll, we'll do a survey. Now, what for timing, what do you need, or is there anything on the, on the school side that they need, or?
You know, there's nothing we can do within the project.
Yeah, yeah.
That, what we have for feasibility study, that was, I'm on this population project, I was trying to push, where is this? And it's not going anywhere, because it can't. But the feasibility study that the board we are gave, the working group in the school building committee was fifty-three thousand dollars. And I just thought the scope was way too much. So, if the town is gonna end up with it, maybe we should, as we just did, start having that discussion. So, I think our working group's great, and see where it goes, and then we could get it on, maybe something on capital plan. And it doesn't have to be something that happens this year, but we could get it on the capital plan for an hour here. In that case, it's time, depending on what the feeling that Karen considers is, to start with the brands. There's park brands, there's housing brands, and we'll also know by that time the results of the Gates, Old Gates data reuse, which is coming in on March fifth.
All right.
The York's Cross.
Very cool, thank you, this is good.
My hopes.
Excellent. All right, on to new business, thank you, Nancy, thank you again for bringing that up. Liaison reports.
The Water Can Lincoln, Water Can Lincoln auction went well, they had a bunch of bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And they're starting some work on, I think, we're testing. Starting to look good.
Karen, anything? I can tell you the, that EDC subgroup on sidewalks meeting. We talked about the bylaw. Folks seem to board up with the bylaw that we're posing and, yeah, we're, start talking about funding looking forward and some ways to make a fund, funding through different sources, so.
I have one liaison report, and it is from the I'll call it Pier Forty Four Park Committee, its real name is
I know.
Park or something, something redevelopment, something.
Resiliency.
Yes. No, that's another.
Oh, that's different.
Uh, the resilience is another way. But there is a, a, a meeting on Thursday, March sixth at seven PM, it's a Zoom meeting. So if people would like to have an update that will be given about the status of Pier Forty Four, you're all welcome to attend via Zoom.
Correspondence, we don't have our clerks, I'll just let you know.
Not much.
Isn't that Xfinity again? It's not.
Nothing.
Call them if you're having problems with your field, or if you're going to lose.
I'll come between that and pull.
Pulling the county retirement board, give us a, an update. Got to do a bylaw that, what, we have eighty point three million in our retirement. In the pension fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have some minutes. I can
Yes, move.
Move to accept the select board minutes for February eleven, twenty twenty five and further move to accept but not release the select board executive session minutes for February eleven, twenty twenty five.
Move on, Ms. Harrison, second one, Ms. Conley, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Kendo.
Yes.
And the.
Yeah, Ms. Thank you all in favor.
Take motion, Georgia.
So move.
Okay, it's got to say, Ms. Harrison, roll call though. Yes, Mr. Goodrich, yes.
Mr. Goodrich, Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. K, Ms. Kendo.
Yes.
Thank you, you all in favor.